Let's call to order the meeting of the City Council of Holiday Island for four twenty, twenty one, uh, twenty one. It's six P. M. Let's start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wes, can we have a roll call?
Yes. Councilmember Graves.
Here.
Councilmember Mills.
Here.
Councilmember Elwood.
Here.
Councilmember Duke, uh, Pittman.
Here.
Councilmember Dumas.
Here.
All present. Mr. Mayor.
I declare quorum. Any discussion on the agenda?
Make a motion. We approve the agenda as submitted.
Ken Mills made a motion to approve the agenda. Who has second?
Second.
Jerry Pittman seconded it. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We do have minutes from the meeting of March twenty-third. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Otherwise I'll entertain a motion that we approve the minutes.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Jerry?
Uh, one correction. Uh, makes note of the discussion we had last time about the ordinance for liquor by the drink possibilities. Uh, I volunteered to kind of be the point person on that.
It said me, and I was wondering when I did that.
Well.
So that's on page, the top of page three.
I saw it, and I said, I don't remember doing that.
I would've thought Ken would've caught that.
Well, I caught it, but I said, well, I might have done that.
On the top of page three, councilmember Pittman.
I said, Ken, I don't remember doing that.
And can we take out the red font and correct the formatting?
I have.
You have?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's supposed to be Pittman?
Pittman.
That's what I've got.
So that, it was wrong in the draft, but it's corrected in your official copy?
Uh, just a minute. So that, no, just a minute. I gotta find the right place.
Page, top of page three.
Oh, down here under councilmember comments. Okay, so that should be Pittman.
Yeah, like I said, I didn't remember doing it, but I said, well, I did, I did.
All right, can I have a motion to approve the minutes as corrected?
So moved.
Jerry made the motion. Who has a second?
I seconded it.
Pat seconded it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved.
That was.
I want to thank Jerry for doing that.
That was Jerry and.
Pat seconded. All right, any ceremonials, recognition, proclamation, or memoriam?
Mr. Mayor, we also had minutes for March twelfth.
We do?
We approved those already, man.
We didn't approve those on the twenty-third meeting?
I think so.
I didn't have them as approved.
I think it read there that said we did.
It did?
Yeah, the minutes.
Yeah, it seemed to be.
They, I thought those were the ones that were sent out initially as the minutes to approve this meeting.
I don't know. There was two, two such minutes.
Yeah, we approved the minutes for February twenty-third and March twelfth at the last meeting.
Okay.
I thought I read it.
That's what I was thinking.
All right, moving on to ceremony.
Did I give those to you? I was thinking I did.
I don't know them. Maybe.
Well, we can check.
Yeah, follow up on that. Make sure they're posted. Ceremonials, recognition, proclamation, and memoriam.
You want me to mention it now or wait till Ken?
Um, why don't you wait till councilmember comments? Pat wants to talk about the July second celebration. All right, reports, standing committees. Any report from any of the standing committees? All right, moving on. No special committee reports. Um, was there any old business?
Uh, did we approve the financials? Did we need to?
We don't, I don't think so.
Okay.
My understanding is all that we need to do is I present to the council.
So I'll just post them?
Okay, uh, any old business? I'm not aware of any. Moving on to new business, uh, resolution, uh, on the town versus city for resolutions.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion that we put Resolution twenty twenty-one dash nineteen, a resolution adopting the town of Holiday Island, resolutions for the city of Holiday Island on the floor for discussion.
Lynn made a motion to put the resolution on the floor for discussion.
I seconded that.
Ken Mills seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Wes, you want to read the resolution?
Yes. Resolution number two thousand twenty-one dash zero one nine, a resolution adopting town of Holiday Island resolutions for the city of Holiday Island. Whereas the town of Holiday Island was incorporated on December three, two thousand twenty, and whereas the town conducted business by creating and approving resolutions, and whereas the municipal classification of the town was elevated by the Arkansas Secretary of State to a city of the second class on March twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one, and there is a copy of the Secretary of State certification included there. Now be it resolved by the City Council of Holiday Island that the res- the resolutions approved by the town of Holiday Island, Carroll County, Arkansas, prior to the change of municipal classification on March twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one to a city of the second class shall be adopted by the city of Holiday Island, Carroll County, Arkansas, best approved by the City Council of Holiday Island, Arkansas, on this date of April twenty, two thousand twenty-one.
Is there any discussion on the resolution? I'd like to thank councilmember Dumas for drafting this resolution, putting a pretty picture of the upgrade certificate in the resolution. If there's no discussion, I'll entertain a motion to pass the resolution.
Make a motion. We approve the resolution twenty twenty-one nineteen.
I'll second.
All right, Ken Mills made a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-one dash oh one nine, the resolution adopting town of Holiday Island resolutions for the city of Holiday Island. Lynn Dumas seconded it. Is there any further discussion? Wes, you want to call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Dumas.
Aye.
Councilmember Elwood.
Aye.
Councilmember Graves.
Aye.
Councilmember Mills.
Aye.
Councilmember Pittman.
Aye.
All in favor. Mr. Mayor?
The resolution passes. Thank you, Lynn. Um, moving on to the contract with Harrington Miller Law Firm to, um, represent the city of Holiday Island in the, as our city attorney. Um, we already approved the ordinance for, um, allowing the city to appoint the attorney as opposed to, um, electing a city attorney. Uh, this is, you know, we selected Harrington Miller. Uh, Ken did a lot of the legwork on this. I'll let Ken comment about the agreement, and you all have a copy of the agreement.
Uh, I just would want to go into the background so people know that we went through the whole process. Uh, I contacted all these mayors from surrounding towns within, like, tried to get anything within fifty miles, which would be an, you know, but I, and I didn't select any of the big cities. Uh, the first one was Berryville, and Berryville has an elected attorney, and I talked to him, and he was a, he was appointed as the attorney for Green Forest also, and he sounded like he's interested. Um, I als- I also talked to the attorney in Huntsville, which indicated, and he indicated interest. Uh, P. Rich, I had a very nice conversation with the mayor there, and he's very friendly, very helpful, and I think, you know, might be somebody we'll call on sometime for guidance. Uh, but he said the attorney there would not be interested. I did not, uh, so I sent the RFQ out to, um, Berryville, Huntsville, and Harrington Miller because, you know, Harrington Miller was, we had experience with him. Um, but the only person that we got a reply, uh, reply back with RFQ, uh, the qualification statement was Harrington Miller. So, um, we, as far as I could see, we, you know, we followed the process, um, and, uh, the, uh, the statement of qualifications we got from Harrington Miller is very adequate.
Okay, then Ken and I, subsequent to this, uh, met with, um, Justin Eichmann, um, the attorney from Harrington Miller, that would be the principal attorney representing, uh, the city, and, um, we discussed, uh, different ways of approaching this and fees and things like that. Um, he said that we could, we could go two ways. We could appoint him as the, as the city attorney, in which case he would handle all of our work at his rates. Or we could appoint the law firm or having a, a, um, a, um, agreement for legal services with the law firm, in which case he would be the primary, um, attorney. However, there are two other attorneys there that, um, have specialties in different areas of municipal law that, um, he said would probably work on some of the things for us as well. He understands our financial situation very well, given the fact that we're just getting started, and, um, the, um, the hourly rate. We decided that rather than putting them on retainer or the law firm on retainer, uh, whether we need them or not, um, that it would be better to just contract with them, uh, on an hourly basis, and, uh, then, you know, we'll use them as much as we can afford, basically. Um, they're going to charge us a hundred and ninety dollars an hour, which is a very, very good rate. Uh, it's below, you know, their normal, their normal attorneys would get, you know, two hundred and fifty to two hundred and eighty dollars an hour probably. So this is a very competitive rate, and, um, then there's an addendum to the agreement that says that if they use a paralegal, they'll charge, um, uh, they'll bill us for the paralegal's work at ninety dollars an hour, and that would be in cases where a lot of research would have to be done. They would have a paralegal doing that at a lower rate as opposed to having an attorney do it. So, um, is, are there any questions on this agreement?
Nope. I had, Mr. Mayor, I had one question. We talked about fixed fee basis of two hundred and fifty per meeting. Uh, did that include travel or, uh, did you understand that or?
No, I don't think so. I think, I think that.
Time.
I, I think it was, it was, uh, that was their legal fee, and then the expenses are over and above that.
Okay.
Um, however, we did talk about the fact that we would more than likely.
Yeah.
Do it by Zoom if we, if we did need them to attend the meeting. But we, we didn't really see very many circumstances where the attorney would have to be here in person.
Now, Mr. Mayor, I guess the question that I have then, are you saying that it would be two hundred and fifty dollars plus possible expenses regardless of how many hours? It wouldn't depend on the hours.
Right. It's two hundred and fifty dollars.
It used to be ninety.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, uh, what was the, you just mentioned a hundred and ninety an hour. What, where does that?
It's in the.
It's on page one. The third paragraph starts with the word second, right in the middle.
It's in the third paragraph, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Uh, which is, that's, that's a pretty.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
Reasonable rate.
Oh, yeah.
Because when we had them for incorporation, we would pay two ninety five.
Mr. Mayor, uh, with regard to, uh, having this is, this firm is our city attorney, would that mean they would also be the attorney for our planning commission, should we have one?
I don't know. We didn't think about that.
I would.
Because I, I've been told, well, these sessions we have on planning commissions have indicated a planning commission might need attorney services from time to time.
I would think so.
In the regard that the planning commission recommends ordinances, and ordinances are approved and passed by the city council, they would be our council, I would think.
Mm-hmm. I, I would think. Yeah, I haven't, I haven't given it any thought, but I don't see why it would need to be someone, a, a different attorney.
Because the city's paying for it.
That's right.
Even if it's planning commission. That's my thought.
Right.
So, uh, Mr. Mayor, on review of ordinances and resolutions and things of that nature, is that going to be used, the point on that, and are we going to run all, everything past them or just?
Um, I don't think we would need to run everything past them, but, you know, going forward, um, I think most ordinances were going to run by the attorney.
I think particularly if they have, um.
Fines or penalties or anything like that, for sure. Absolutely, positively, for sure. Anything to do with planning and zoning, absolutely, for sure.
Contracts.
Um, but, um, you know, if we want to pass an ordinance that says that, you know, the mayor doesn't get a parking space, I don't think we don't, I don't think we have to. Or, like, you know, one of the ordinances we're going to have to pass very soon, as an example, is setting the, the salaries and compensation for these city elected officials. I don't see the need to run that by the attorney, but, um, you know, the vast majority of the ordinances, I think.
No, I, I agree with that. I just wanted to.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I could see the question, if the planning commission had a, had their own attorneys, and they proposed ordinances, their attorney would look at that, and then if it was referred to the council, then the council attorney would look at it, so you'd have.
Double dipping.
Two attorneys.
Yeah.
But we would also be paying for their attorney.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. All right, any other discussions on this? Otherwise I'll entertain a vote to allow me to sign this agreement.
I'll move to approve it.
Linda moved to approve the, uh, agreement with Harrington Miller. Does that have a second?
A second.
Ken Mills seconded it. Any discussion?
Just one more question. Will we list Justin as the city attorney or just Harrington Miller?
Harrison Miller.
Harrison.
He said that's.
Harrington.
Or Harrington Miller. He said it either, either way is legal.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Did that need to be, well, everybody was in favor. I was wondering if it needed to be brought up. I don't know.
I don't think so.
Okay.
I'll get this afterwards.
Oh, yeah.
All right, moving on, presentation on planning and zoning. Everybody should get their draft manual out.
Right. Linda is preparing, uh, so I can share my screen so the public can see portions of what we've done.
I'll get there in a minute.
Okay.
While she's doing that, I was going to say this at the beginning of the meeting, and I forgot. Uh, for those who are watching on Zoom and may have noticed that we're not wearing masks, uh, everyone in the room has had their two-shot vaccinations, and it's been two weeks since they've had their shots. So since we're not a risk for exposure to anyone else, um, we opted to not wear the masks in the meeting tonight.
My screen shared, Linda?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so I can't tell looking at my screen?
Yeah, looks good.
Okay.
And you probably need to.
Is this window, uh, the Zoom window in the way? Is it showing on the screen?
I didn't press that.
No, it's not. Okay.
Okay, but you can go to full, you can go to.
On these documents?
Full screen on the screen you want to show.
Okay. All right, I just want to start with a little bit of introduction about planning and zoning. Um, I've been attending a couple of training sessions so far that the municipal league has put on, and it's been very informative, and the more I learn, the more I see how large this project is. And so I captured this, uh, from a different webpage, but I just want to read it for the public, for those that might not have a screen. Planning provides a vision for the community today and in the future. The goal of planning is to maximize the health, safety, and economic well-being of all people living in all, in our community. This involves thinking about how we can move around our community, how we attract and retain thriving business, where we want to live, and opportunities for recreation. Planning helps create communities of lasting value. While architects often focus on a single building, a planner's job is to work with the residents and elected officials to guide the layout of an entire community or region. Planners take a broad view and look at how the pieces of the community, its buildings, roads, and parks, fit together like pieces of a puzzle. Planners then make recommendations on how the community should proceed. One of the greatest challenges as, for planners is to imagine what can and should happen to a community, how it should grow and change, and how it should offer residents ten, fifteen, and even twenty years into the future. Planning is successful when it's inclusive and reflects the comprehensive voices of the entire community. So that's important to note that planning isn't just, um, looking at how the city's laid out and whether a certain building or business should go in a certain place. It's the whole community, everything tied together. And there's one other image. It's, uh, this was on the end of a presentation that we had last week. Planning is not easy. It's not simple. The result will never be perfect, but it will be good if you work hard and maintain your focus and vision as a community. So that's the, the guidepost, I guess, that we need to consider when we're looking at what's going to happen with, uh, Holiday Island and what we may or may not choose to do with planning and zoning. In that light, because of conversations that we had during the campaign and what the election was about, um, it sounds like at that time that Holiday Island was interested in doing planning and zoning. And with that light, I took on the project of, uh, working on the project manual for how we might get there. So I'm going to start off with this front page of this document that I created, and with an apology, I left a blank space right there underneath of Dan's name, intending to put Wes Stelly, recorded treasurer. He is part of our council, so in my latest version, I've included him there. At the bottom of that title page is a note that says that it's a draft. It's a work in progress. I've updated this document a couple times since I printed it on April second, and I found a couple corrections that were necessary and others were just, you know, for information. But this is a, an ongoing process that if we, as a city, decide to go ahead with planning and zoning and turn it over to a planning commission, this would be a, a tool that they could use and probably adopt. It'd be something that they would maintain, that they would, uh, take care of the project and take care of the timeline, that kind of thing. That'd be my recommendation, recommendation at least. Okay, if you will, skip to page twenty-three. See if I can get that there. Page twenty-three.
This is going to go pretty fast.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
I took this as an introduction, and then hopefully we're going to have a lot of time on feedback for questions and answers.
Skip right by the boring stuff.
Yeah. Okay, on page twenty-three, this is important, that, uh, everybody needs to know that the credit goes to this author. His name is Jim Tungalan. He is a staff planning consultant. He's available for consulting services as a service to the Arkansas Municipal League. He's a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners, and, uh, he was on the Zoom meeting today in training, and apparently he's going to be a presenter next week when he's talking about some of the caveats that have to do with VRBOs and rentals in communities. So apparently he has some feedback that might be beneficial for everyone to see. So he is the author of the main document that I took from the municipal league, and I added my own emphasis with the bold and the red ink and my comments. I took words out that talked about towns, left it as cities of the second class, and added my commentaries as well about things that are important to Holiday Island. So I customized his document, so most of the work is his. In addition to that, at the end of the document, you'll see the fifteen-some pages of text that I included, and what I did for your convenience and everybody else who's using this document was to reference and show the ordinances, the statutes, rather, of the state of Arkansas. And so there are lists at the bottom. That source comes from this website. It's the one that's linked from the Arkansas State website, and it's important also that the documents that I copied, the top of next page, it says they're current through legislation of two thousand twenty, the first extraordinary session, the two thousand twenty fiscal session. So it's through all that legislation enacted in two thousand twenty. There have been bills passed and bills still under consideration that affect things like zoning. There's a bill that's before the board, I believe, passed committee today, that's on trees and how we would handle that. There was a, a bill in place to, uh, talk about monuments, whatever that might mean, because the bill was, language wasn't clear, but it might mean that, uh, some marker on the, on the corner that really isn't a, a statue could be restricted in some way, that we don't have local control. But I believe that bill was, uh, was defeated. It came out of committee or didn't come out of committee. And there's also changes in the works or bills in place that have to do with FOIA and how we communicate with the public. So some of the things that I've copied here may change, and I'll do my best to make certain that they're right before we go forward as a maintainer of that document. So it's from legislation through two thousand twenty. Nothing currently has changed. Okay, with that, we'll go back to page two. Page two is the headline. I want to make clear that this manual is a roadmap to what we might do. It's not a policy. It's not a specified procedure. Uh, again, it's the work of Jim Tungalan that I copied and added my best estimates to, and it's a, it's a direction that, based on statutes that he put together, and I think it's a great document, so I used it for a template. Uh, it's important that the aspect for municipal officials is that the common law establishes the power for cities of the second class to adopt and enforce plans. Uh, we have that, uh, privilege, and we have, as I said in the meeting today, we have that obligation. Uh, we can't escape that obligation to make certain that our community is safe. So one of those tools that we can use is in, in planning. The bottom half of that page, um, is just a list of the requirements that our mayor put on for us to work on when we do projects. And so I took care of, I think, the best that I could in making sure that the legal requirements are listed, what we must do, who's responsible, how that function will be carried out long-term, what we need for resources, and reporting requirements. what we need for resources, and reporting requirements. Okay? And you can interrupt me anytime, this is not just for me for give and take. We're going to flip through the table of contents real quick, just to show the headlines are in the yellow portions that, uh, his document was broken up. I didn't change any of that in the original that I copied, I just changed some of the, the context of what's on the pages. So, we end up on page, page seven. A lot of statutes. And I only put the statutes in that I refer to in this document. There may be others that are important to planning, I haven't mentioned, and, uh, especially in the two hundreds and the three hundreds that they talked about in planning today as well. This page seven, that's entitled, "The Holiday Island City Planning Commission." Now, that's my invention. I looked for, how can we distinguish ourselves from what, uh, is already in place in our community? And I thought that inserting the word "city" in front of "planning" would make us unique. I didn't find any references in all the different organizations and, uh, things going on in Holiday Island that I thought HIC, PC would be appropriate. If it's not, it can certainly be changed, but this, this again is my recommendation. We could skip the middle part of this page because it comes later in our conversation, but at the bottom's important that, as you read my document, it's talking about a city planning commission and not the, the commission that, or, excuse me, the planning commission that was created by the McCullough Corporation. So, the document doesn't address that issue of what they're doing and what they, uh, what the declarant is, um, is set out for declarations and restrictions in our covenants for our specific units. This document is about what city planning is supposed to be doing. Any questions about that, those comments at least? Okay? So, then I wanted to jump to page twenty. Going back into page twenty, at the top is all the instruction that's in the document gets us to page twenty, if you will. Page twenty. And again, this is just my brainstorming. I didn't, uh, go back and forth with anyone about that. I simply read what the statutes had to say with this document that was directing and came up with some, uh, suggestions of what things we should do. And down in that, uh, section of what we need to do first is to go over it with the mayor, and I did that. We didn't have any conversations about it because it was still a work in progress. But we're at bullet number two, if you will, we're, we're sharing this document today with council members. And the first revision that I noticed that I need to make is probably in, um, the third bullet, that the mayor and designated council member interview potential council member candidates that, in my research and looking whether, uh, what we have to do for FOIA, that suggested that all meetings with any potential candidate should be public meetings. So, that's something we need to do publicly, is if we're interviewing a candidate for the position. Other than that, that was my intent for getting this, I guess, to your hands, so that you guys would have a chance to read it, have, uh, your questions and, uh, maybe help better understand what planning is and planning commissions by asking your questions. Do you have any?
I have one.
Okay.
And maybe I missed it, maybe, because I, I read this, but it's hard to comprehend, comprehend everything with one or two readings. Um, the, I think the mayor appoints the commission members, is that correct?
The mayor nominates them, the city council has to approve the appointments.
Oh, is that, that, that clarifies my question, thank you.
I, I don't really have questions, just a, uh, request.
Okay.
Uh, the mayor sent out a, uh, digital copy of this.
Yes, sir.
And there are no page numbers on it.
Wonder what reader you're using? Apparently, you're not using a Word reader, would be my guess.
I just put it in my documents folder.
Okay.
I'll try to reopen something.
That's fine.
Yeah, the page numbers are in the bottom right-hand corner.
Yeah, they're in the footer, if it's a Word reader, if it reads a Word document, they should show up.
I think, no, yeah, it's a doc. I don't know, I'll, I'll work on that.
Okay. It's a footer, it's in the footer. But while you're thinking, maybe I would just say, it's, it's a huge task for planning, and that's what we're learning in this training session. The, uh, man that spoke today was from Sherwood, he's been doing this for, he's been in planning for fifteen years. He's been on the commission for seven years in his community, I think it's his third or fourth year, as I recall, being the chair. And he said, "It's tough to get people to volunteer because it's an awesome task." And he, uh, gave hints on what, uh, what a good chair should do and what a good commissioner should do. And good commissioners are, are folks who have an open mind, that come to the meeting prepared, that come to the meeting with one agenda only, and it's for the city that they're planning for. That if you have a personal agenda that you're going to do something in your neighborhood or someone else's, that's a wrong attitude. You need to have the attitude that you're working for the city, you're planning the city's future. And it's visionary-type work, it's not nuts and bolts, it's, it's thinking about what the plan would look like. So, you set up, the first thing is to, to come up with this plan, what the city's going to look like. And then you come up with, uh, an area that it's going to affect, and then you start looking at how you're going to protect that plan by implementing certain ordinances. And that's all a process that engages their effort and the city council's effort in its approval. But what I'm getting from that is the, the planning commission is fairly autonomous. And once you set it up, they do their thing. And they would recommend ordinances to us that we would put in place to defend the plan. And their job then is to, um, approve projects that people bring to them. If they want to do something in a certain neighborhood or want to do a certain thing, it has to pass their approval. Whatever rules we set, whatever ordinances we set up to protect the plan is how they function. So, it's a procedure we'll be establishing through ordinances. It's a tremendous amount of work.
Question?
Yeah.
Um, it, it, it sounds, sounded to me like the council does not approve the plan, but we approve ordinances that defend the plan.
Well, the, the council does adopt the plan after it's created.
We do adopt the plan?
We adopt it officially, and it gets posted with the county recorder. And, you know, there's several steps, I think that's documented in the steps.
Okay. So, we, do we adopt the plan and?
And the planning area map?
And the planning area map.
The planning area map.
The master street plan.
The master street, all those plans.
Yep.
Okay.
We do all.
And so, the council has to approve all of them.
Yes.
I would suggest that some of that work is already done. Like, the master street plan for Holiday Island is done.
But if we have a street map, but we don't have a street plan.
We don't have the formal documents at all.
You don't have a vision to the future.
Right. And if someone had a, a vision to the future that a certain parcel might, should be developed for a certain thing, it might need a street and sewer and water, that needs to be part of the plan. That would be part of the master street plan, this future. So, when they work and talk about the future, what does twenty years look like, it might have some more streets on it.
And there's also a facilities plan, public facilities plan also.
I, my biggest concern is, you know, is how much planning and zoning can we do? We, you know, we can't go contrary to the way the current cov- covenants are laid out and what's, what's in them.
That has to definitely be considered.
And, you know, I, I mean, it's quite evident that, you know, the, when they laid those out, the majority of them, you know, fifty years ago, uh, they're, they spent a lot of time figuring it out. They just, they were basically interested in seeing how many lots they could cram in each, you know. I mean, there's, there's, you know, the, the planning talks about, you know, for churches, for parks, and for... They didn't do anything like that, and I don't know how we, how we can override that.
Well, that would be for the planning commission to worry about.
Good! Damn, I thought I had to worry about it.
For the commission to investigate, for them to, uh, do their homework, to, uh, bring us the plan, and then draft ordinances that we would have to approve, but we probably would take that to our attorney.
And if I were, if I were, uh, appointed to the planning commission, the first thing I would want to do is look at a plan from another city.
Well, I, I, I think, you know, as, as we go forward, and this is one of the things that I would, you know, very interested in doing, is looking at how the, our two sister cities addressed that, who, you know, started off as cities. You know, of course, you bend in Cherokee Village and see how they navigated this, because they, uh, and, and, well, we know that Cherokee Village has, you know, areas laid out.
Do they, do you know if they do city planning? They may have chosen not to yet.
I don't know.
Yeah, and I haven't checked it out either.
I, I think we need to spend some time talking to the people in the, you know, Fairfield Bay, you know, and how, um...
Are you volunteering to be on the planning commission?
No. I, uh...
I, I think that, yeah.
But I, I.
I don't disagree with what you're saying, but I think the process is going to be that we appoint a commission, and then it's up to them to do all the research. It's not up to us to tell them, "Well, go to Cherokee Village and figure this out," and, you know, "Go someplace else and talk to them." It's their job.
You know, when you go down through this thing and you talk, and you see what's talking about planning, you know, most of that's not, you know, you can't change. You know, there are, there are parcels, there's, I can think of about four of them, that are not zoned, or, and so, they could be anything. But, uh, I, 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 you know, I kind of envisioned that we would start off by establishing the commission, a committee. What is a commission?
It's a commission.
And, uh, and then they would evolve and come up with it, because I think, and we, we've talked about it before, that a general, I don't know what you call them, gen- general code of conduct for maintaining property or, uh, with that, you know.
Those kinds of things probably aren't part of the planning commission.
Huh?
The safety issues, health and safety, if it's about nuisance properties and that kind of thing, that would not be planning commission activity.
Okay.
I think that's one of the things that, one of the first things that has to be, um, made clear to everybody is, um, what it, what is the res- what is planning and zoning?
Okay.
Planning and zoning is not, um, can I park an RV in my driveway?
Okay, so, we're, it's two different, two different things, and we can go forward and do those with...
With some limitation.
Right.
As Lynn pointed out in here, if, if it doesn't meet the test of protecting health, safety, welfare, more, or the morals of the community, then we have no authority to do, whether it's under the umbrella of planning and zoning or any other ordinance.
Well, the current covenants have got some of that verbiage in them.
Right.
And, uh, there's nothing that doesn't go as far as it needs to probably, but...
It, it may be helpful at this point, if you turn into the, uh, the statutes and find fourteen fifty-six, four oh three. It's on page thirty, Jerry, so it's near the end. Fourteen fifty-six, four oh three.
That's why, you know, was wanting to see how some of the other cities approach this. Hey, I'm on page thirty, what am I looking for?
Fifty-six, four oh three. Oops. The purpose of planning, or the purpose of plans, and this is what the, the commission is tasked to do, is create a plan.
Well, that's, this, yeah, this doesn't have anything to do with what we were just talking about.
Well, it does, you were asking to take care of, uh, Dan's example of parking or nuisance property. Those purposes of the plans, those two subjects are not in this list.
Yeah.
So, illustrate, this is specifically in four oh three, what the plan is supposed to be covering, what it does.
And what the planning commission would be limited to.
Yes, what areas they work on.
But, I mean, there, there are, you know, planning's going to take a long time.
Yes, and it takes a lot of public input.
But taking care of nuisances and, and, and establishing the commission to approve building permits, et cetera, and, and code enforcement of, on, you know, uh, what do you call it, you know?
Building code.
Building inspector, et cetera.
That would be under this.
We could do that without having a long-range plan.
It's a completely separate effort.
Hmm, no.
Nice part, building codes.
Building codes comes under planning and zoning.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, but we could.
That would be under number four, safety from fire and other dangers.
But, I mean, right, I mean, that, to me.
And permitting, permitting buildings.
But that permits, uh, construction, this should be, anyway, I, I, I just see those as, I, those are something, those two items are something that we get the commission set up and, and go forward on and...
Well, there's one, there's one statement buried in this plan somewhere, and I don't know what page it's on, but it says, "Plan first, then, then legislate."
Regulate.
That's correct.
Or regulate. You know, if we jump in there and we just start saying, "Okay, we're going to pass an ordinance" that says that, that, um, you know, you, you have to fol- follow the building code or some building code or something, you know, then what? If we don't have a building inspector, we can't enforce it, um, it... I, I totally agree, you don't have to have every single element of this plan on paper and approved by the council and on file at the county or something like that.
Well, I just.
But if you don't have a substantial part of it, you know, then, you know, we're going to end up in trouble.
Hey. Well, we're already in trouble.
Well.
Well, we don't have a, we don't have a functioning, uh, planning commission to issue building permits.
That's step one.
Well, and that, and how in the hell are you going to wait two, three years to do, establish that while you're planning?
You know, I didn't go ahead on the timeline to put some times on it, but initially, I thought it would take us a year, but because of Holiday Island being fifty years old and having the covenants for guidance or having other communities that may be doing planning, I think we have a lot of things we can draw on. And the piece that isn't there is taking the time to collect the data and having the community forums and the hearings that were required to by statute, so that everyone's informed about which way we're going. I think it can happen, you know, in a relatively short period of time. It's a huge task, but I think there's a lot of resources we can, uh, rely on. But you're right, we don't have one for Monday morning, you know. That's absolutely right.
Well.
And, yeah, I, and I, I think it's, it's, um, it's inappropriate to say we don't have anything now. We have a functioning planning commission that has limited resources and limited authority, but they are functioning, they are providing a service, they meet, they deliberate, they approve, they disapprove, and things like that, and, um, making the transition from what's there and working to what we want to replace it with has got to be done very carefully.
But they already have manuals, you know, that, that, that they, they've written on how they're, how they operate, uh, with, with the...
And their mission is separate, though, their mission is different.
Their, their mission is to protect the declarant and the property owner's interests. That's their job.
I mean, there's some overlap perhaps, but basically, they already have a mission, and it's very well-defined.
In looking through this information, that there are things that state law actually prohibits the city from doing.
Yes.
And some of those are things probably that are regulated or covered in these covenants.
They are.
Um, you know, that's up to the resident, their committee, commission, and the residents of that unit of the various...
Right, and I read that those are, uh, it was in one of these statutes, that those are still legal.
Yes.
I just wanna know how, you know, how we're going to go about this, like, 'cause I think it needs to be broken down. I, you know, I don't see how you could, I don't see how we have to have a long-range plan before we can have, um, you know, issue building permits and...
We, we have to because the statute dictates that we have to.
It's, it's the law.
The law says after this and after this and following that. It's in the statutes. There is a sequential set of events that have to occur. It's been dictated by the Arkansas State Legislature.
Which one?
Okay?
It's laid out in one of these.
To help you out, you can turn your page to, um, fifty-six, four oh five.
Which page?
Yeah, page thirty-one. At the bottom is fifty-six dash four eleven, the purpose of the commission. And the training we got today is they suggest that this be handled sequentially, that you prepare and have a prepared plan, that you make recommendations to the public, and then you prepare and administrate the regulations.
I see nothing in there that says, you know...
Okay, turn your page to thirty-two and look at four twelve. Paragraph B, it says, "You shall prepare a work program and make comprehensive studies." And then C, "You shall prepare and maintain a map." D, "Following preparation of the planned area map..."
It still don't say anything about building permits.
No, I didn't find any specifics about building permits in the statutes.
I...
But the building permits are based on land use, correct? Right? You get a permit to build a building of a certain type for a certain purpose in a certain place.
Uh...
And land use is zoning.
And we already have that in our covenants.
We can't enforce the covenants as a city.
Right.
It's not our responsibility.
We can enforce the building permits. Anyway, okay.
I CIV can enforce building permits to some extent right now.
Huh?
I CIV, or, I mean, the planning commission.
Planning commission.
Existing.
But they don't...
There are things, and there, there's a lot of things in the covenants that a city has no authority to do. As an example, the covenants say that a house in unit, let's say, eight, has to be a minimum of eighteen hundred square feet under the roof.
I read that, I understand.
It's against, the, the city cannot regulate that.
I know, but the, uh...
The city can't say you have to have a brick front of your house.
But the building permit has to do that.
No.
The building permit, if it's issued by the city, can't restrict people, you, you have to, that's, that's why we're gonna run into trouble if we don't have the plan first. Because if the city says, "We're not gonna let you build that house 'cause it's only eight hundred and fifty square feet," next thing we get is a summons from a lawyer that says, "You're violating Arkansas statute such and such," that says you can't restrict the size of a house.
And just so that we're clear on that, it's single-family residents, the city can dictate sizes on multifamily. It's the single-family residents that we can't put those restrictions on.
Can we put restrictions on someone, uh, putting like a mobile home on, say, maybe...
Evidently not.
There are, there's a separate statutes that I haven't studied about, uh, mobile homes, so I don't know the answer to your question specifically.
But, all right, then, to it, to Mayor's point about, uh, you know, you can't, if somebody wants to build an eight-hundred-square-foot home, like, the city can't regulate that, but can the current planning commission enforce the covenants where, you know, somebody doesn't build a tiny home right between two, you know, three thousand square foot?
They, they can assess fines that don't have to be paid.
Basically, no.
And they can, you know, uh, give them letters of warning.
They can join the property units, the property owners, join the lawsuit of the property owners of that unit to bring violation to the covenant that that property owner agreed to when they bought the property.
But, so would it be proper for the city to encourage that? Exactly where we're encouraged?
Maybe not encourage, but direct them to that method that's available to them.
'Cause that, that's, that works somewhat, I mean, we had an incident over on Table Rock Drive, you know, the one I'm talking about, and four or five neighbor, neighbors signed a petition, and the property owner moved his...
Certainly, that's...
Storage building out in the front yard.
From what I understand, it's how it's supposed to work, 'cause it's an agreement, that covenant is an agreement with the other property owners of that unit.
But the commission can, the city planning commission can, uh, issue building permits and enforce the state codes. Only thing is, it can't say it has to be a certain size.
Or shape, or, or finish.
Or finish, yeah.
Well, it, it, so, I mean, we, the, you know, we're back to the, you know, the, the thing is, it's, the covenants of each one of those units is, is the overriding, you issue, you know, fact, you know, and...
For certain things.
Certain things, but we can still have building permits to make sure that's all the standard, the, uh, state statutes having to do with fire codes, electric codes, plumbing, and have an inspector and, okay?
Yep.
All right.
One, one of the things they talked about in today's planning and zoning session, um, was also about how we choose the members of the planning commission, and you got into it a little bit, Lynn, but they need to be willing to study and learn and take training in planning and zoning because we probably don't have hardly anybody out here who is actually well-qualified to be on planning and zoning and knows all the, the, certainly the statutes that apply, uh, the state law, good practices, uh, how it's done in other places. Uh, so there's, there, you know, whoever we get needs to commit to training and studying and researching and being the kind of person that would do that diligently.
So with that for a segue, thank you, uh, statute fourteen fifty-six, four oh four, it's the bottom of page thirty. It says, "The legislative body, the municipality, may create a planning commission of not less than five members, of whom not least, whom at least two-thirds shall not hold any municipal office." So that's where, uh, on page two, I'm gonna flip back to that, where I took the guidance and my brainstorming or my offer, if you will, what to consider, what the planning commission should be made up of. Is it page two? Nope. Page, here we go, page seven. I just took a stab at proposing this for discussion, that's how things get moving, if you put something on the table and you can work on it. So as we consider what a planning commission might look like, this was my suggestion only. It's not anything that, uh, has been agreed upon or, or, uh, even discussed with anybody, it's just my suggestion. Suggesting four members from the public and one from the city council. I think that might help, uh, in our communication, having one from the city council. The terms of office are established by our ordinance, and they can be any term we want. I suggested here they be four years, but initially you probably wanna create an initial term for the first group so that you have some opportunity, uh, just by term that you would have a chance for, uh, turnover, but yet protect, uh, the experience that would be there. The, the planning presenter that, uh, talked today, he said they used to have an ordinance that said the, the commission member with the s- the shortest remaining term was automatically the chair, and he said that doesn't always work out very well because as soon as he gets re-elected or re-appointed, then he's at the wrong end of the list and you got the wrong person in charge, so they removed that ordinance from their, from their planning. But there's also what Dan was talking to, talking about, um, what it's gonna cost, and I just did some thinking about our resources, and it's gonna be a significant amount of money that we're gonna have to have to set up a commission because, for one, it's all done in public, so we need the same kinds of tools that we have here. If we can't share these, we have to duplicate that or replicate it. And the main thing is to give them space and the equipment that they need just to operate as a commission. I didn't put any dollar signs on any of that amount, but...
Also, did you pick up on the fact that one of the things they mentioned was that the sec- the secretary, the person that really does all the work in planning commission, might need to be a paid position?
Yeah, to make sure your planning commission is appropriately staffed, so that one of your commissioners isn't tied up taking minutes and not contributing to the meeting.
And, and that's key because taking the minutes is tremendously important to prevent you from being sued.
That we document clearly what the motions were and what was agreed upon.
I recall reading in, uh, my clerk recorder's manual that the clerk record, city clerk or recorder is the one responsible at least for the custody of, of those minutes and...
Just to ensure they're protected, perhaps?
Mm-hmm.
So what do we do next?
Um, I need to study this a little more. My, my main, my main priority as a next step is to meet with the current planning commission because, first of all, there's a lot of expertise there. Secondly, we need to understand, you know, if, if we're going to, if we're gonna work together, if we're going to work separate, if they're going to just transition over to the city or what their expectations are, like Linda said, you know, part of their responsibility right now would not fall on the city, so, um, that has to be taken into consideration. But the last thing we need is two entities in the same community thinking that they're the ones that are authorized to issue building permits, and, uh...
I agree.
So that has to be resolved, so...
And I, I have my own opinion where that is, but...
Well, you know, I'm not gonna go into this with an adversarial attitude about it.
No, I, I...
I mean, we're gonna work cooperatively with the, if the current planning commission feels like, like their mission is different than the city mission and consequently, they need to continue to exist and operate and work cooperatively with the city, then that's, the direction will go. If they think that there's no need for them to continue to function, if they trans, if they can transfer the necessary responsibilities over to the city, then that's great too. So we'll, we'll figure it out.
I mean, the, the biggest job of the planning commission is developing the plan. It's not hearing people talk about their property problems.
Right. And that's basic.
Well, I mean, you gotta execute the plan. Somebody has to execute the plan and the...
Well, there will be ordinances and enforcement.
Yeah, and the code enforcement officer...
But the enforcement part actually falls to the board of adjustment.
They're not a planning commission.
The board of jo- zoning adjustment.
They're a building, Jim.
They're the ones that hear requests for variance.
Right, they're the ones that hear variance requests and protests.
Protests, yeah.
Protests of, uh, what the planning commission did.
Right.
And that's the other thing, that, that, uh, adjustments group, whatever they decide is their decision and it's only, uh, can only be challenged in the state court, it doesn't come back to us.
Clerk of court.
Yeah.
That was very...
And the council is not part of that.
Right. So, you know, we have the opportunity, if we create a planning commission, that this council could operate as the planning commission if we chose, and if that's the case, the mayor is the automatic chairman, so that's one way to set it up, even initially, if that's what we had to do, get started, if you didn't find people volunteering to be on the planning commission.
Let me go on record as saying that's probably not the way we're gonna go.
Okay, that's why I worked on this document.
Well, I hope you can find five willing members.
I think the current planning commission is willing, we just need to...
Well, they're gonna have to shift focus.
I know several of them are very interested in, and, um, they're wanting to do it now rather than later. We need no more confusion.
Okay, uh, any, have we, uh, kinda beat this to death?
Well, I took it as an introduction, so rather than going through thirty pages of text.
Does anybody have any particular, um, anything that jumped out at them? Well, I found, uh, I even highlighted it, um, it's on page eleven if you wanna read, um, and this comes from Lynn too because it's in red.
Well, it may not be mine, but go ahead, which, which paragraph?
There's a note on the bottom where it says, "We plan first, then regulate," so... It, uh, to use another, uh, saying, you don't go, "Ready, shoot, aim." You ready, aim, and then shoot.
The question was asked, I don't remember where, if it was here, but the boldness or the, the fonts that I chose, I thought black font was helpful for headlines and catching intention, and when I put the text in red, that was my intention, that this is very important to understand and not miss it.
I got a question.
Okay.
In, uh, page fifteen, toward the top of the page, says, "The board," and that would be the board of zoning adjustment, "the board shall have the following functions: Here appeals from the decisions of the administrative officers in respect to enforcement and application of the zoning code." Who are the administrative officers?
I don't know. I have to look at fourteen fifty-six, four sixteen, it might help us.
Yeah.
Four sixteen. He requests a literary zoning, "Here request for variances."
Literally?
Decisions of the board respects the subject to the court. It doesn't jump out, may, uh, jump right out at me.
It doesn't jump out to me either. That'd be just a question to research, I suppose.
Sure.
Hey, um...
At first I thought they might be talking about code enforcement officers, but I don't know that they would be doing that kind of...
What is, what's the difference between planning and zoning code?
Zoning is the land use code.
In the meeting today, um, they used the phrase, or they said it, and I'd heard it before, that some cities don't do zoning, they only do planning. So there's a distinction that I don't know the definition for.
And they also said that smaller cities like ours might only have two zones, two zoning areas, whereas a larger city like Little Rock would have multiple.
I thought zoning says you're gonna have manufacturing, you're gonna have commercial, you're gonna have private...
Yeah, but as, as a city gets larger, you have, you know, four or five different com- commercial or industry, industrial, uh, zones.
Or mixed use or...
So, I mean, yeah, I mean, we might have, uh, retail and light industrial and residential, I mean, we're, we're as small as we are.
And to some extent, that's already locked in, in the unit covenants, so, but that doesn't mean that it can't be adopted by the city as, as a zoning code.
Another thing to note is that, um, a planning commission has to be subject to FOIA, so every meeting, they can't talk about any of their business outside of a pub, public meeting, just like we can.
I don't know whether...
And that may be the biggest stickler...
You bet.
...to getting, uh, the current planning commission to, uh, be interested in being part of the city.
Because everything has to be done in public and recorded.
And last week, they talked about site visits. If the commission wants to do a site visit, if you're going to have two planning commissioners standing side by side and talk about the project, it has to be recorded. It's a public meeting. The press has to be notified, the whole nine yards, it's a public... The press has to be notified. The whole nine yards, it's a public meeting.
Press.
I think we have three people that wanna be notified, woman.
I know.
When we do something.
I agree.
Okay, any other, uh, it, it is a lot to, you know, the, the very, very, very first thing that I think Lynn mentioned was, we have to decide if we wanna do planning and zoning.
Right.
And, you know, give that some thought. And, uh, you know, maybe, maybe there are things we don't have to do planning and zoning in order to pass very targeted, very specific ordinances about, you know, certain things.
Well, there was this one paragraph in here that I just turned the page off from it. But, where was it, under four sixteen or something? It said that, um, let me go back to it, 'cause it, it hits on your point, I believe. It's in one of the ordinances, I mean, one of the, uh, state laws here. And it talked about what a city of the second class could do, that it couldn't, I underlined it. Oh, here it is. Says, "The authority given to a city of the second class and an incorporated town under this subsection of the law does not include the authority under fourteen fifty-six, four sixteen, unless the city of the second class or incorporated town has adopted and filed a land use plan and corresponding zoning ordinances."
Which code are you reading, the statute?
So, you can't do anything under fifty-six, four sixteen unless you have a plan and ordinances.
And what, what statute were you reading that from?
That, that was from fourteen fifty-six, two oh two.
Okay, that's the authorization.
Page twenty-seven.
Okay.
And let me go back and find four sixteen.
Bottom of page twenty-seven, okay.
So.
So, four sixteen and forty.
Four sixteen is zoning. That's how you do zoning.
Okay.
So, if we adopted the, the, the covenants now as our zoning initially, uh, I mean, we could grant various, variances to that, they could come to the city council to do that.
No, when, when someone wants a variance, they go to the planning commission, and they're only empowered to grant a variance if the variance fits within the use that's in the plan. They're not supposed to approve a variance if it's not in the plan.
Oh, I'm talking about before we even have a plan.
We can't do any zoning before we have a plan.
If we, if we adopt the, the covenants, I mean, we can't even.
I don't think we can. We need to ask our attorney, but I don't think we can.
I think Cherokee Village did.
Well, that's a good question.
Well, they did say in the, in the meeting that, that planning commissions have done things that are illegal.
Whatever.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, I mean, just using a, a serve hypothetical, but, I mean, if somebody wanted to put a pig farm out on, you know, three or four, uh, subsequent.